Stand after a invocation by Pastor Romer. Mr. Hill, if I could ask you to lead us in the pledge, please.
Thank you.
I got to, before I pray, I got to do a funeral on Saturday for Mrs. Catherine Steiner. She was a government teacher at Taylor for years. She was ninety-five years old. It was an easy funeral to do. She taught government for decades at Taylor and her family gave me a gift of a tote full of magazines from her classroom. Old Look magazines and Time magazines and all of the stuff that she taught of all of the crises in the United States from Eisenhower on. And I just spent a day going through and thinking and long before crisis was used for ratings, we did pretty well. You know, it seems like everything's falling apart now and I have a box full of things that said, I might have felt like we were falling apart then too, but, but we made it, right? There's a lot of resilience when community comes together and self-governs. At least for the last seventy years, I got to go through kind of a history of seeing how we do a pretty good job in this country. In boards like this and in much bigger rooms and other parts of the country as well. So I'm gonna share a prayer tonight from Peter Marshall again, last time I was here. I'm a big fan of Peter Marshall. He prayed this and changed it a little bit to make it appropriate. He shared this in nineteen forty-seven for the Senate when he was the chaplain of the Senate. Our Father which art in heaven, we pray for all the people of our country and of this community. That we may learn to appreciate more the godly heritage that is ours. We need to learn in these challenging days that to every right there is attached to duty and to every privilege and obligation. We believe in the eternal order of things, that you have so ordained it and that you have joined these things together. Let us not try to put them asunder. Teach us what freedom is. May we all learn the lesson that is ours. That it is not a right to do as we please, but the opportunity to please and find pleasure in doing what is right. Above all, may we discover that wherever the Spirit of the Lord is, that is where freedom is. May we have that freedom now in His presence here in this place. May it lead us and help us to keep this community good and free. We ask this in the name of Jesus our Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. You're all set. Thank you. The November eighteenth meeting of the town council of the town of Greentown will come to order. You all should have copies of the minutes from the October meeting. Did you get those from? From caucus?
Making my way down.
There they're coming. Great. Thank you. You all have copies of the October twenty-first minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October twenty-first as reviewed and signed in caucus.
So moved.
And a motion from Ms. Everling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lance. Any questions, comments, or discussions on the minutes? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to the dockets for this evening. The general fund docket along with two payroll vouchers is two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. The wastewater fund docket this evening, ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. The water fund docket for this evening, forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ten cents. And finally, the stormwater docket, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and six cents. I would entertain a motion to approve the dockets and two payroll vouchers as reviewed and signed in caucus.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Standish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Skinner. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the dockets? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the dockets and payroll statements, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Peel, sir, you are up.
I think we have some administrative reading matters, but I don't have any specific items to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Peel. This would be the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-three and ordinance establishing the salaries of the town council clerk treasurer, town employees, plan commission, and board of appeals for the town of Greentown, Indiana. A summary for that, not going into the division between departments of water, wastewater, general, et cetera. Town board president is fifty-six hundred, town council members thirty-seven hundred annually, clerk treasurer thirty-five nine twenty-eight annually, deputy clerk treasurer thirty-two nine twenty-eight. Town supervisor water operator, seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty. Wastewater operator, water operator fifty-four, and if they have water certification as well, it's fifty-seven. Street supervisor, forty-seven thousand, four dollars per annum. Utility office manager, forty thousand, eight dollars. Town marshal, fifty-nine thousand, sixteen dollars. Part-time deputies at a rate of twenty-five dollars an hour. Part-time street, twenty-five dollars an hour. Street employee hourly at twenty-seventy. Wastewater employee, twenty-three sixty. Water wastewater employee, twenty-one fifty. Part-time seasonal, thirteen fifty. Part-time office, thirteen fifty. Utility clerk, sixteen fifty. Plan commission, seventy-five dollars a year. Plan administrator, thirty-six hundred dollars a year. Board of appeals, seventy-five dollars a year on duty pay, on call pay, ten dollars per day. Employees receive a hundred dollars per year of service for longevity pay. And those are Mr. Mendel, twenty-one hundred, Ms. Duke, twelve hundred, Ms. Good, twelve hundred, Ms. Smiths, eleven hundred, Mr. Mock, nine hundred, Mr. Sanders, eight hundred, Mr. Swisher, five hundred, Marshall Halleck, five hundred, Paula Hubbard, one hundred, and Philip Howell, one hundred. I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-five-three on second reading.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Skinner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling. Any questions, comments, or discussion on ordinance twenty-two-five-three? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This will be coming down for individual signatures here. Moving on to second item this evening, and I believe, let me confirm what changes. You had highlighted it, right?
It was the comp.
We have an updated town of Greentown personnel and employee benefit policies to be revised on January one, twenty-twenty-six. And the item that was, the only updating was on the compensatory time off, right? Compensatory time, it's a second paragraph under overtime. Compensatory time may be used for overtime at the rate of one and a half hours of comp time for every one hour of overtime. Scheduling and approval of compensatory time shall be at the supervisor's discretion. Employee preference will be given for consideration. If said time off will not adversely affect departmental work. Comp time must be used by the end of the calendar year and does not carry forward. That's the accrued, but unused compensatory time is forfeited upon separation. It's the last two statements that are the update to that based on some experiences. I would entertain a motion to approve the personnel and employee benefits policy with the single revision. Mr. Lance, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Standish. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the updated policies? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise, and again, for individual signatures here. Thank you. That's it for attorney. Greentown Volunteer Fire Company, you're up.
Month of October, forty EMS, tin fire. When they coming up is breakfast, we sent it out to the fairground. We got grandchildren, kids.
And what date is that going to be?
December sixth, eighth, eleven.
December sixth, eighth to eleven, out at the fairgrounds. And then also I'd like to remind everyone that the end-of-year fundraising campaign has been mailed out. So residents of this area should have received one. I would encourage you to participate in that if you're able to do so. Good. Thank you. I would move on. Marshall Halleck, police report this evening.
For October, eight traffic arrests, twenty-three traffic warnings, zero ordinance violations, nine cases investigated, one criminal arrest, seventy-six calls for service, and nine accidents investigated.
Marshall Halleck, anything you would like to add to the report?
No.
I would entertain a motion to approve the report as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Skinner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the police report? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Moving on this evening, the water utility report for October, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred gallon maximum daily flow, minimum daily flow, one hundred and three, six hundred gallons. Average daily flow, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four for a total pump this month of four million, nineteen thousand, nine hundred gallons. We had six disconnects and as of the report, one was currently still disconnected. Two, a total coliform rule, TCR test performed, both tested absent satisfactory and reported IM. Red meters completed customer service order and performed data logs on meters as requested by customers. Chlorine equipment was serviced by Living Water. Employees attended the Mueller valve and hydrant trading at utility supply in Peru. Replaced two failed meters and completed exercising of water valves around town. And that is it for the water utility report. I would entertain a motion to approve the water utility report as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Standish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the report? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to the street department for this evening. Performed utility locates for Indiana eight what one, cleaned equipment and picked up brush and trash around town. Finished the townwide cleaning of Catch Basin using the VAC machine. Trim trees for school restaurants through the town. We completed two successful dumpster days, replaced forty-four road signs throughout town, picked up salt from the county for the winter, and swept streets and picked up leaf bags. And there has been no shortage of leaf bags being picked up, I can tell you that. I would entertain a motion to approve the street department report as presented.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Skinner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lance. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to the wastewater report for this October, this evening. We operated at seventeen percent of the point five eight million gallon per day design flow. We had one point oh seven inches of rain. Monthly plant flow average was a hundred thousand gallons per day. Monthly plant flow total, three million, ninety-five thousand gallons. Performed all routine sampling and testing, general cleaning and maintenance. BL Anderson performed yearly flow meter calibrations. They also performed maintenance on the blowers. Pump sledge to four Geo bags for disposal. American and pump installed the new Barnes Raz pump and flush and perform service on the alum pump. Alum pump is continuing to operate okay. I know it had been finicky for a week or two. Good. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the wastewater report as presented.
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Everling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Skinner. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the wastewater report? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to old and new business. Marshall Halleck, anything you'd like to bring before the council this evening?
Not at this point.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Skinner?
I have nothing to bring.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lance?
I want to thank Eric for coming tonight and praying for us. That was very nice. And I, I would like, I would like the, I guess the council's blessing on letting the street department committee work with Mr. Mock and Marshall Halleck on some of the speed limits in town. We talked about that last meeting. I don't know if any things been done on that, but if the street, if it would be okay for the street department, just kind of do some homework on that subject. Present it back to the council maybe next month or so, so we can kind of keep that going. So I don't want to, I think that's important. I think Marshall Halleck agrees. It's, it's important to look at, keep looking at. So if that's okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's right. We have, we should have a street department superintendent, or street department lead next year, so to speak. And I would also like the Greentown Volunteer Fire Company included on that for looking at streets that should be considered no parking one side to allow sufficient passing for, for your trucks. We've got a lot of narrow roads in town.
Stuff not getting smaller.
No, it's, no, it's not. Yeah, that's, that's very true. But I, I, I would agree. I don't know if, if that needs to be a motion, but I.
No, I just wanted to make, just.
I think we need to continue.
Just get a consensus that that'd be okay.
Because it will be combined when, if you see, those are listed in our code of ordinances on the town's website. And any changes have to be added to that. We'll have to have a public hearing because it affects fines.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Lance. Anything else?
Uh, no, just again, thanks to the town, Mike. Thanks for all you do and your team. Appreciate it. You're basically invisible, which is great because I, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I get probably no complaints at all about anything, so things are going good. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lance. Ms. Everling, any older new business?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Standish?
I do not.
Ms. Duke? The the next council meeting, there is no reason to meet on, I need to get my calendar up here. What would it be, December?
Maybe the ninth.
I know, no reason to meet on December second. So the next meeting of the town council of the town of Greentown would be December sixteenth. And then I do have a few issues I would like to bring up here. I would consider, I'd like to, the council to consider making a motion to enter into a donation agreement and use for funds with Eastern Howard School Corporation for consideration and approval. Perhaps at the next council meeting for the town to consider making a donation to the planned update of the two playgrounds at Eastern Howard School Corporation in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with ten thousand dollars coming from CCD forty-four oh two and fifteen thousand coming from CD twenty-two oh nine. The agreement would stipulate that the donation is for playground equipment only, that the playgrounds are to remain accessible to the residents of the town. And that they are to maintain their schedule of fundraising through the first semester and construction during summer when school's out. That is their, their current plan. There are sufficient funds on those two lines to cover the items as discussed in caucus.
Just quick side notes.
Yes, sir.
As we discussed briefly in caucus, there would need to be, in my opinion, some sort of an agreement.
Yeah, I mentioned that. Yeah, this was approval to prepare an agreement for consideration at the next meeting. It's not approving the amount.
All good.
It's, I didn't want to do the effort to prepare one if the council's not interested in doing that. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Would, just curious, would the dispersment be in advance of their expense?
It's a division.
Or it's just a donation?
As a donation, it would not require an invoice. So that's why Mr. Peel is advising on the agreement on use of funds.
Okay.
So yes.
I make a motion that we prepare the document for the donation.
We have a motion from Mr. Lance. Is that a second from Mr. Skinner? Any other questions, comments, or discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then in. Yeah, I can get that and get you with their attorney and work out an agreement. Yep. And the people who are working, I'll get that to you, Mr. Peel. The next one as well, I think it would be appropriate to enter discussions with, between the town of Greentown and Main Street as discussed in caucus for a services agreement, if you will. Next year would perhaps be unique to make a starting donation towards a park or development of a park. And looking at in twenty-twenty-six, being able to provide funding in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to Main Street. And then likewise entering into an agreement with the Historical Society in anticipation of events celebrating our country's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary next year in the amount of twenty-five hundred. I would entertain a motion to begin work with those committees as well via Mr. Peel to get those donations set up. And those actions would be taken next year. I just want to get the document preparations started.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Standish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling. Any questions, comments, or discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then as discussed in caucus, one final item for this evening. I would entertain a motion to carry over the twenty-twenty-five council structure and committees to twenty-twenty-six.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Skinner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling. Any questions, comments, or discussion on that? This is subject to the terms.
I have one, one concern, and I.
Yes, Mr. Lee.
I would, I would prefer an election, some sort of an election. And the reason I say that is because last year, when it was sort of went through like this same process, it was questioned as, and viewed as just railroading it through without an actual formal process that you go through to choose your officers.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's, that's just the concern I have that it would be, the optics would be what they are, so.
Okay.
So I, my.
Would that be for the committees as well or just the structure of the council?
Just the, just the officers. I don't.
The officers of the, of the council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, but I'm not, and on comments from Mr. Lance. I'm gonna, I would let that motion and second die. That, how we go, right? If we don't want to advance with that.
No one wants to.
And then, so what I would do is I would entertain a motion to nominate a council president for twenty-twenty-six.
Scott Dio.
We have a nomination of Mr. Dio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling. Any questions or other, I, sorry, are there other nominations from the council? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving Mr. Dio as town council president for twenty-twenty-six, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Then is there a nomination for vice president?
I nominate Craig Steed.
We have a nomination of Mr. Standish. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Skinner, from Mr. Lance to Mr. Skinner. Are there any other nominations from the council? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving Mr. Standish as vice president of the council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I would entertain a motion to maintain the committees as assigned from twenty-twenty-five carried over to twenty-twenty-six.
So moved.
Have a motion from Ms. Everling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Standish. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you all for getting through the items from caucus. I have a lot of information to get to Mr. Peel. Guests, any guests to bring items before the council this evening? If so, please approach the podium, state your name and address.
My name's Floyd Krieg, two nineteen East Walnut. And I first want to thank the, the council for the money, the money going to Greentown, Main Street for, I hope we should have the information done for the park first of December. We, me and Rich Lacy met with Brad Howell and had a real good talk. And he's going on vacation, but he said he's gonna get back with us in, for, around first December. And I also got a email from Ms. Everling that was forwarded to me from her on a, a, what was that? Hold on. It was five hundred West, five hundred, yeah, West Peyton Street. It's the, the trailer park. And they was wanting to know if they could sell trailers there. And they sent it to me. I forwarded it to, I told her she had to get a whole zoning board. As far as I know, it was a zone.
It's zone C one. That's a business. That would be, would fall within what's allowed. Do you, do you mean, they currently sell trailers on their, on a lot, so I don't understand.
Yeah, I thought they did anyway.
I don't understand the, the request.
Everyone might.
Yeah.
And I forwarded it out, but if I, it's a zoning affidavit. They want a signature for that and I don't know. We've sent it, I think I sent it to Mr. Mock.
Yeah, that would.
To see what exactly we need to do with that. I'm not sure what they're asking because that's exactly what I was told. They're already zoned to sell. So I don't know what, what else we need to do.
Well, they just want proof that it's zoned correctly?
I don't know. It's a zoning affidavit.
It might be just want to make sure they're zoned correctly before they start going down.
Have you, have you received that, Mr. Mock? If you want, if you would forward it to myself and Mr. Mock, we can, we can review what it is and if necessary, get Mr. Peel involved. But it, the property there is zoned, I'm sorry, C one.
And then there was a company that was Max Harvey's land out there. They was inquiring whether that was in the city or the county and.
It's in town and that's being, this, this has already been dealt with, I believe. He's wanting to subdivide a parcel off to donate to someone. And we sent them to the county. He has to have a state survey done and, and they would record that with the county. And the zoning that's assigned to it would transfer to that as a sub parcel unless they came and requested a different zoning.
Okay, yeah.
But that, to best of my knowledge, that's been dealt with.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks Floyd.
Yep. Any other guests this evening?
Nick Smith McCollum's, one oh seven North Meridian. I don't like talking much, believe it or not. But I just want to thank the street department for taking care of it because I've been the whole summer cleaning up the curbs, picking up the trash, always throwing, sweeping up these leaves and stuff, and here they come, sweeping up the leaves and street cleaners. I didn't know they did it. I mean, maybe. I didn't know they did it. I mean, maybe people live in the city taking it for granted, but I was very appreciative of it. So, just thanking them for the hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our uh, street sweeper operator is very proud of that vehicle. And that was not a cheap, cheap purchase, uh, what, about a year and a half, two years ago? Or maybe longer. I'm getting forgetful, but thank you. About a year and a half ago, wasn't it?
No, it's maybe a year old.
It's only a year?
It's not even a year. It's just there's something.
Man. Um, anyway, time goes by for me. Any other guests this evening? Hearing none. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Skinner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.